So we will start the meeting. Thank you for everybody being here, commissioners. So call, call the meeting to order. This is, keep track of the date here, six thirty, July fourteenth, a two thousand and twenty-five planning commission meeting, Phoenix, Oregon. At this time, we'll take a little call, please.
Chair Halfridge?
Yeah, yeah, here, sorry.
Great. Commissioner Hanson?
I'm here.
Commissioner Monsot? Commissioner Letts?
Here.
Commissioner McFadden? Commissioner Norpson? And I see that Wendy Adams is on Zoom. I'm trying to promote her to panelist so she can speak, but she's not accepting it. So I'll mark her as here.
Okay, all righty. So at this time, I ask that those who are willing and able to stand up for the pledge allegiance. Thank you. So approval of agenda, approval of the minutes, did everybody, did everybody get a moment to take a look at the minutes? The minutes from May twenty-seventh. It was on a Tuesday because we had a holiday on Monday. Does anybody, looks like present was myself, Chris Loz, Sarah and Wendy Adams. So does anybody want to make a motion to accept those minutes? You'll make a motion. All right, we have a motion and a second.
I'll second.
Here, we have a motion, second roll call, please.
Commissioner McFadden? Commissioner Norpson?
Yes.
Commissioner Adams?
Here.
Is that a yes?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Hanson? Is, oh, sorry, absent. Commissioner Monsot? Abstain? And Commissioner Letts?
Yes.
Okay, motion passes.
All righty, see, do we have any other minutes to look at? No, we don't. So here we, at this time, we'll have public comments on these, these comments are on non-agenda item. And so each person shall be allowed three minutes. They cannot allow their time to somebody else. They got to keep their, within their own personal three minutes. There's a sign up sheet which I have here. When you are called, step forward to the podium there. State your name and address and, and please speak. So at this time, I'm going to call. If I can say this right.
I believe those two that I handed you are for the agenda item seven A. So for the public hearing, not for the public comment.
Okay, I guess I misunderstood. Does anybody want to speak on a non-agenda item? If not, then we will move on to new business. Tonight, we're having a, a public hearing on C, CU twenty-five dash oh-one Rogue Valley Basin Partnership Bear Creek berm removal. Jeffrey Wilcox, our planner, will do the presentation.
Thank you, Chair. So this application is from Rogue Basin Partnership and.
Really quick, sorry, we have to read the opening statement.
Do you want this first?
Yeah, we have to read the opening statement first.
Okay, so the, the opening, opening state.
Yeah, so I'll, I'll read the opening statement.
So our, Mr. Moody will do the opening statement.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Chair. The community development director has determined that the approval criteria that apply to the application currently before the planning commission are as follows.
Phoenix Land Development Code, Chapter two point eight, Bear Creek Greenway District, Chapter three point seven, environmental constraints, three point nine, erosion prevention and sediment control, four point two, development review standards, and four point four, conditional use permits.
Evidence and testimony in the hearing must be directed towards these criteria or other criteria in the city's zoning code, comprehensive plan, subdivision code, or other applicable land use and development related regulations that a person believes applies to this decision. Failure to raise an issue with sufficient clarity and detail to afford the decision makers and the parties an opportunity to respond accordingly to the issue precludes appeal to the Oregon Land Use Board of Appeals on that issue. Before the end of the hearing, any participant may request a continuance. In addition, excuse me, whether, whether or not there is a continuance, a participant may request that the record of the proceedings remain open for at least seven days after the hearing. The planning commission will consider whether or not they will continue the hearing or leave the record open for a specified length of time for new written comment and testimony. When the city reopens the record to admit new evidence or testimony, any person may raise a new issue that relates to the new evidence, testimony, or approval criteria that applies to the matter at issue. When called to speak, please come to the microphone or in Zoom, raise your hand and state your name and residential address for the public record. Please direct your comments to the applicable criterias identified by city staff. The following time limits are allotted for public testimony, and we do have a request tonight to give the applicant more time, which they will ask for. Applicants generally have ten minutes, individuals, five minutes, those are individuals that are making just general comments. Individuals representing a group, ten minutes, applicant rebuttal, ten minutes. Following the close of the hearing, the commission deliberates and renders a decision. If you have any questions or do not understand the procedures, please ask the chair of the planning commission, chair of the planning commissioner, city staff to explain the process.
Thank you. Quasi judicial, any commissioners, have you visited the site in question? Any commissioners have spoken with the applicant or anyone about the application or proposal? Commissioner must, you know, state your relationship and disclose any full details of ex parte contact. I see any hands?
Need to disclose that I don't have the exact date, but I didn't reach out to Mr. Coffin to request a site visit. And then was advised that that would be ex parte communication. So we ceased communication and I have not spoken since did not do any sort of site visit.
Okay, what, how, and that, how long ago was that? Conversation? That's okay. I mean, just trying to get a.
But I did go out and visit the site. Commissioner McFadden this afternoon.
Okay. Thank you.
Well, I also have more. I feel like I also need to disclose a little bit of my own personal history now with this project directly, but I did in the past work for the Rogue Basin Partnership. And in my current position, I work for the Department of Quality. I don't think I have a conflict with any of us. I do not have a program that, as long as you know, stuff that permeate. And while my program does do a lot of work on temperature issues, mine focuses on the operation and Douglas County back on technical responsibilities in the road.
Thank you. Good knowledge there. Anybody else have anything?
Do I have to say it again? Maybe I'll be less shaky next time.
So moving forward, ask staff report from the planner, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Okay, so applicant Rogue Basin Partnership. The proposal in a nutshell is to remove a rock berm along Bear Creek, reconnecting Blue Heron to Bear Creek, according to the narrative. The intent is to restore riparian forest wetland habitat now occupied by the berm, remove invasive species, reduce fuels, reconnect floodplain, and create cold water and high flow refuge for salmon and other fish. So when we looked at the use itself, the proposal we found in chapter two, because it's zone Bear Creek Greenway, it's a stream oriented activity, and therefore this is at the planning commission's discretion to decide this outcome. There's also another section that says any excavation and activity with removal of vegetation comes to you, to you all as well. So that's kind of why you're seeing this tonight. It's a, it's a very important zone. Going into the use statement, just briefly, the intent is to preserve the natural environment and protect public health and safety. So there's like a nexus of the two things. This is actually a pretty straightforward review, even though there's four city actions required to see it through, the riparian landscape plan, the floodplain development requirement, the conditional use and the development review. There's not a tremendous amount of development standards for a project like this. This is, you know, unusual. So it was a fairly short and simple, straightforward review with not too many conditions. Jumping to the design standards of chapter three, the, the two that really stand out are the fact that we're doing work in a riparian area, which is basically just an area next to a stream, simply put. This application came in with an approved riparian landscape plan, blessed by ODF and W, so staff had minimal conditions required from that. Basically, the only one was making sure that the, the landscape once removed goes back in of some kind, the, the landscape planting. So there's a condition for that. Moving on from there, the main one, design standard in chapter three was actually the floodplain, the, the fact that the, the project sites all in the, the floodway, the map floodway, according to the National Flood Hazard Layer. So, you know, based on definitions in the code, there, you know, do an excavation and fill along creeks and things like that. A whole bunch of, you know, a couple of conditions kicked in there. Requiring notification to communities nearby, requiring notification to FEMA. A new firm map will have to be generated and things like that, but they're all pretty boilerplate conditions. It's like if this, then that, with not a lot of discretion to them there. Chapter four is where it gets kind of interesting. That's where the discretion and, and your, you know, interpretation kicks in. That's the, the review standards. Go to that section really quick. So because it's a conditional use, these criteria kick in. Where it talks about the suitability of the project based on improvements nearby and the natural features. Is it timely based on, you know, nearby infrastructure and things like that? And will it alter or impact nearby city infrastructure? And it's just important to, to bring up the fact that, you know, this, this berm is located near, you know, a high volume road, one of the main corridors for the town. And so we applied a condition in there to make sure that the roadway and, and the, there's actually a main water trunk line that runs, that serves our community, and it serves talent and Ashland to the south, too. So it's important to know that, you know, we want to, we want to ensure essentially that city infrastructure won't be damaged with a well-intended environmental restoration project. And we, we believe based on the criteria in chapter four that the planning commission does have the authority to impose conditions of approval to ensure that public infrastructure is protected. And so I've cited those in the, in the last couple pages of findings in the, in the proposed final order. A lot of this, what was submitted is just the domain of engineers, right, like hydrologists and a planner? So I deferred to our city engineer, what do you think? And those comments are in the, are in the file. And our city engineer deferred responsibility more or less to the project engineer. And so we, planning staff want to make sure the city is safeguarded from unintended consequences resulting from removal of the berm. And so that's where the deed declaration condition comes into play. That's kind of a, a brief summary of what we're dealing with here. I'd entertain any questions on the, on the staff report, or you can open it up for the applicant. You want to hold off on that?
Mr. Chair, if, if I may, before questions. So as a floodplain manager, too, I did realize that we missed a condition of approval required by FEMA, not in our zoning code currently. We're kind of in that flux area where cities had to adopt new language in their code by December thirty-first of two thousand and twenty-four to have a provision that no net loss was a result of any development that happened. The city chose not to do that because it's still not clear as to what those responsibilities of the city will be. However, the NFIP and FEMA have determined that the city would automatically default to a permit by permit review for habitat assessment. And that condition was not in the floodplain review. So in your findings, which you don't have, because I just did this just before the hearing, and I did meet, I did speak with Robert about it a little bit before we started, but, and I'm sure they will have questions, but basically on, I'm recommending that on page six of the final order, if this is, if this is to be approved. And I'm just going to read the statement really quick because it's really short, but I think it's important and the condition's important, too, because as an NFIP community, we don't have the choice of saying, no, we're not going to require habitat assessment. Even though we fully believe that what they're doing is probably more beneficial to the habitat than leaving it, we still have to require that habitat assessment. So there's a new paragraph added to page six, which is under application for development permit for floodplains. And basically what it says is, what the permit does not include is a habitat assessment required for all development proposed after December thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-four. The definition of development is broader and, and covers nearly all activity in the floodplain, including grading, excavation, removal of trees over a certain diameter and construction or replacement of structures. After December thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-four, new federal and state requirements apply to floodplain development applications in Oregon and other states affected by recent FEMA guidance. And I use the term guidance loosely because the NFIP does not have any regulatory control over the city. However, they could remove us from the NFIP, and then that's not good for anybody. Each application must include a habitat assessment that demonstrates the proposed development will, will result in no net loss of floodplain functions. This includes storage, riparian habitat, and water quality. The assessment must be prepared in accordance to FEMA, in accordance to FEMA's regional guidance and requires detailed documentation of existing and proposed conditions. So with that being said, the addition of the condition of approval is that the applicant shall provide the required habitat assessment to FEMA's regional guidelines demonstrating no net loss of floodplain functions. So again, not a choice, has to be in there. And we don't believe that that's going to, even with recommending approval, I still feel as a floodplain manager that the information provided in, in the review and the request to remove the berm and all of the habitat information and all of the modeling that was done, that we're going to get to a point where no net loss is demonstrated. I don't feel like that's going to be an issue, like we're setting up the application with a condition that can't be met. I feel like once that's submitted, we really probably can check the box, mostly with the information that they already have, but it is a process that we have to follow, and we have to check that box off, because when we do an audit with NFIP as a community rating system, community, we could get in trouble for not doing that. And we want to do the right thing, because we would put this provision on anybody that was doing development in the floodplain. This just happens to be the first one since December of twenty-four. So now I won't forget again. So with that being said, if you choose to recommend approval of the application after hearing the testimony and, and, and having deliberation, staff would, would recommend adding that particular language to make sure that the findings are complete.
Chair, may I be recognized?
Making some notes here, sorry. Anybody got any notes to take there?
Chair Halfridge, may I be recognized?
I'm sorry?
May I be recognized?
Yes, please.
Thank you. And so I'm just wondering, who did the floodplain plan review?
I did, so I do, yes, this is as a floodplain manager, yes.
Okay, is there a reason why this was not identified during the floodplain plan review or at any other point in time besides now?
Yes, because it's not in our zoning code, and it's the first one that I've done.
Okay, I just, and is this study something that's going to be a significant burden to the applicant?
I don't believe so, because like I said, their application is complete, and the whole purpose of the application is to create a better environment for the habitat. So my review of the net, of the no net loss or the habitat assessment has to just confirm that what they're doing doesn't have a net loss. And I feel like after reviewing the staff report, I could probably say that, but I need the habitat assessment to be submitted so that I can say that.
Okay, so this is, just because I'm not in the industry, so a habitat assessment is, involves what? And is this an additional cost, like a hydraulic analysis, or is this something that's, that's easily done, and you already have the paperwork for it, and the applicant just has to submit a form?
So there are some FEMA guidelines that, that they will have to address. Again, I feel like everything that they have in their application can just come from that to address the FEMA guidance that's required. And once that's done, we can check that box off. I don't feel like it needs a professional. They may want a professional. That's, that's not something that we can control. But I feel like they're more than capable of, of doing that work, considering who's submitted the application.
Okay.
So let's open the public hearing at this time and have applicant would be the first, first up, I believe. So I think that unless there's any more questions from the planners or city viewpoint.
I do have a question.
Okay, I want to hear it.
So this is a conditional use permit. Why are we working under a conditional use permit? The project, you know, you can't reverse it, can't change it. It's not really conditional anyway. Once it happens, it happens. But is there some, something because of the process and the code that we had to do a couple?
Well, I think this particular application is shown as requiring CUP because of the discretionary nature of stream-related activities and, you know, fill removal and, you know, projects that could have downstream impacts on public infrastructure. Probably better to have input from higher up the chain of command.
So the code is very clear that it is a conditional use permit, and it requires planning commission review. Staff believes that that's probably the case, because there are, this is not, as Jeff mentioned, this is not your normal development permit where you have somebody building a structure, you know, with parking lots and things of that nature. So this gives the planning commission, the reason, the reason it is a conditional use permit is so that the planning commission can apply discretion and can apply conditions of approval that they feel necessary to address the approval or the denial of the application.
One of the conditions would be that they do the habitat assessments after approval.
Correct. That's just, that's an additional condition. There are other conditions, but yes.
Thank you.
So again, we'll open up the public hearing. Order of testimonies are followed. Applicant present proposal, evidence, and support for the application. Sir.
First off, Chair, we, as Jeff mentioned already, this is a little unusual for everybody. And you have fifty pages in your document.
A lot to read.
Sorry. So we would, we, we need a little bit more time than fifteen minutes that was allowed, and we'd like to ask if that's okay now. Before we get started, if you get interrupted halfway through or not be able to wrap up.
Absolutely. This is a great project, so granted, yes.
Want to click the arrows?
How's the sound coming through? Okay. Hello, hello? Okay, great, okay.
Visit, visit.
Oh, have you had some great photos you will enjoy, so.
That's better. Yeah, excellent, okay.
So can you stand? Oh, okay.
All right, I'll start things off on this, this slide here would start things off.
I'm sorry, can you introduce your name and?
I'm going to do that right now.
Thank you.
Okay, you're welcome. Yeah, my name is Scott English, and I'm the project manager and part of the Save the Phoenix Wetland team. And then my left is Robert Coffin. He's a hydrologist as part of the team. And Joey Howard, he's basically the hydraulic engineer that's part of the team, as well as members of the Save the Phoenix Wetland. They're also part of this team. And we appreciate the opportunity to present this to the planning commission. It's, it's, it's been a wonderful project. It's taken us a couple of years to get here and a lot of work. This presentation will talk about Cold Springs, the old fill, which is the berm, and threatened fish, and the habitat that's located along the Greenway. And the next slide. The reconnection. This restoration project is all about reconnection of the Cold Springs on your left, Blue Heron Creek, Bear Creek, and the floodplain. The following slides will provide much of the required information that was developed in order to plan and implement these restoration elements. Next slide. This slide basically is a site plan. But before we get into that, I just want to just talk a little bit about the group. The Save the Phoenix Wetland Group, working with Oregon Department of Fish and Wildlife. And one of the members, Jeff Gertis, is here in the background. The Rogue Basin Partnership, Oregon Department of Transportation, and the city of Phoenix. We propose to remove a rock berm along Bear Creek adjacent to Blue Heron Park and reconnect Blue Heron Creek to Bear Creek. The berm was constructed in nineteen fifty as part of the relocation of Bear Creek to its current location. As you can see, let's see, I'll have to dig my.
They can see our owners, but.
Here, I got it here.
Can you see my pointer on your screens now?
No.
Okay, so we'll stick to.
Stick to.
Yeah, that's fine.
That's fine.
Everybody can see, that's fine.
Yeah. So anyway, I wanted to just go over this site briefly. The berm is located here, and it's located right between Bear Creek here and the Bear Creek Drive here and adjacent to Blue Heron Park. There's five different, excuse me, three different springs that are part of the Little Bee, Little Bee Creek, Blue Heron Creek, and that's in this section right through here, and this is where we propose to have the reconnection from here to Bear Creek. Next slide. We've got two pictures here. The one on the left is the beginning of the rock berm. There's the entrance to Blue Heron Park. And the berm is approximately six hundred and eighty feet long, five to eight feet high. Width varies between twenty and forty feet and approximately seventeen hundred cubic yards of material will be removed to take that berm out. And photo two is the approximate midpoint of the berm near the location of the proposed reconnection of Bear, Bear, of Blue Heron Creek to Bear Creek. And as you can see in the slide, this is where basically the channel, Blue Heron Creek, would connect directly to Bear Creek. Next photo. This photo basically is a schematic. It basically shows how the connection would take place. And you see here on the left, this is a wetland right now. The water is pulled up in that wetland, and what we would do is we would reconnect by creating this channel that would flow through here, across the old berm footprint, and empty into Bear Creek. Next slide. The fire opened our eyes in many ways, and boy, was that true. After the fire, we were able to spend a lot of time trying to find out what was lost in terms of that riparian wetland habitat. And we discovered the berm here, of course, and a lot of the riparian wetland habitat was burned. It exposed not only a berm, but also sixteen springs, and the burned habitat left in the wake of the fire. In two thousand and twenty-three, the Save the Phoenix Wetland Group took this opportunity to explore and map the springs took this opportunity to explore and map the springs and repairing wetlands as a first step to see what could be done to restore the habitat devastated by the fire. Over a two-year period, we identified 10 objectives to help restore the area represented by the berm, Blue Heron Creek and three springs. The two post-fire photographs represent the berm here on the left, and you can see Bear Creek is on the left-hand side. And this is right after the fire. As well as an area close by that always represents the repairing area that was devastated by the fire.
In that photo to the left as well, the berm, you can see the area, the land complex and the ground here gets just pulled out.
All right. So we developed 10 objectives to help heal our natural environment and our community. And with that, we'll get into the, uh, the 10, um, the 10 objectives. First one is address city concerns. Secondly, identify problems and solutions. Third, obtain implemented implementation permits and approvals. Complete temperature studies and mapping of 16 cold water springs. Obtain grant funding for the project. We actually awarded a ODFW PFA grant and Watchmore Wildlife Grant to fund the project. Next, remove the berm that is a barrier to fish patches and reconnect Blue Heron Creek to Bear Creek and open the floodplain. Seven, provide grading plans and other designs. Eight, remove fuel left over from the alameda fire and construct an interpretive trail. Nine is eradicate invasive species and develop and implement the ODFW approved planning plan. And lastly, provide monitoring and maintenance of planted and restored habitat area for three years. And with that, I think we're gonna let Robert take over here.
Springs. This was started, take a look at those. Here are the three cold water springs that are right there and also in Blue Heron Park. This whole little creek called Blue Heron Creek all exists right here along Blue Heron Park. That's important because they're so close by, water stays cold. And if that water can reach Bear Creek, it can provide cold water right here to convert salmon and other fish and wildlife. So this is just three great shots of the springs. The one on the left. Looks like a little drinking fountain. That, that water, like it bubbling up out of the ground right there. And it's the closest one to Blue Heron sign when you drive in. Now, but none of you have ever seen it. And yet it's right there. I hope you get to see it. So we named them something just so we can refer to them. They can be named something else, but there's the three springs that comprise Blue Heron Creek. So the first thing we did, we started on this before we decided to come here to see you folks and uh, provide, go through the permitting process was get to learn about it. We conducted a baseline assessment. Things like, there's a shot of the, the spring that actually our own setter. See the shot up here, if you can see my pointer, that's a concrete spring box. We're gonna clear the water. It's that, that's full to the top and overflowing. What an interesting. Uh, we did a rigorous water quality assessment, about 750 bucks per sample to look at serious things because here's springs coming out from underneath Phoenix. Are they a good water quality or not? We did that on our own guy. There's Scott taking flow measurements, did some drone flights. We actually had somebody from the nature conservancy that were so excited about the springs. They came to date the groundwater. We talked about a serious, uh, spend that as we don't know yet. I'm sure you're gonna ask, how old is it if you don't know yet? But they came down because they heard about the springs. Here's an example. Uh, we mentioned the, the temperature and is that nearly significant? So here's one graph just to show you. Use my pointer. So look up here if you don't mind. Here's a graph from, first of all, it's the summer of 2022, three years ago. And we put these thermographs or thermometers in the water all summer long. This line on the temperature is the danger of the mid for sand at 64 degrees Fahrenheit. This line is a thermograph or a thermometer that was in Bear Creek all summer long. And you can see that pretty much from June all the way to September, hey, the fish had problems. However, here's that one spring. This is the thermog, oops, wrong way. The spring right here. As you can see, that water never exceeds the limit. And the three springs that are providing that, and as Scott said earlier, this is actually part of what we call the miracle wild. There's 16 of these. But these three are blocked. Uh, another thing we did, okay, let's not work in a vacuum. We got feedback and I'm not gonna read through these because I do want to honor our timeframe. But I wanted you to at least see this. These agencies and groups that we got feedback from are as varied as you can imagine. From, I mean, the Code Enforcement and Fish and Wildlife, Corps of Engineers, the county themselves and lots of brainstorming out in the field. So we learned, wanted to learn how would this fit into our entire community? And we got that feedback. We went from there to get some project support. Would, would you support this actual project if we removed the berm and reconnected Bear Creek? What do you think about that? And again, I'm gonna read through them all for the time allotted. And I have questions, but they have quite a variety of folks about completely different tribes. The Department of Transportation, who was the owner of the property, by the way, and several others. With revenue support. Permits. That's why we're here tonight, right? Getting a conditional use permit. Here's a list of all the other permits that we have already obtained for this project. Before we begin tonight. Again, I'm not gonna read them all because actually you all do have this in your packets. It's just kind of a reminder because the 150 pages. I'm not sure if I have a revenue law there. And then we got to the studies and design to actually come to you tonight. So, and we did the drone flights. We, we used Wiener to really establish and see the actual uh, topography comes with small detail in the water quality assessment. And the rest that I've been, um, go past because a lot of that was done by our engineer that's here tonight. And Mr. Hammer will be talking about some of that, uh, but some pretty serious studies and design. Including as Scott mentioned, a plan actually looked at this site for three years. We have to maintain it, as you all know, whether it's development, rebuilding, or if it's our natural environment, we understand that. So, one of the issues that didn't come up was the concern is how, what could this do to our infrastructure? I was my pointer again. I think the biggest concern, everyone kind of understood that the natural environmental parts were pretty straightforward. But we have Bear Creek Drive over here in the greenway, and we have Bear Creek coming right through here. And we have the berm right in here. So there was concern about, well, if you remove the berm, secondly, due to the floodwaters and a lot of work and study and discretion went into that. This is another shot over here that just shows kind of from a side view of all that. So.
Utilities.
So, yes, and one of the things we did, oh, sorry. Do you have a question?
No, I don't. I have a comment. Um.
Right in the mic, Mr. John.
How Bear Creek Drive got here, 1950?
1950.
And you, do you know why? And why Bear Creek got diverted or this material came from?
Oh, okay. Two different questions. Do you want?
Well, Bear, let's, let's, Bear Creek. You start here. Go here. That's where the wetlands are right out the other side. And then at that, back in, I guess, 1950. And then I five was part of this project also. You know, that's what you're gonna talk about.
Don't, please go ahead and.
No, you're safe. Oh, yes. So, but anyway, that's, that's how all this, that's why our, right back here, Eric Creek came right through here. Right here where we're staying. And the wetlands that we have here was what's left of. And so Bear Creek and the berm, probably part of the project, but Bear Creek Drive was put in and all that was diverted over. Just, just the point of history of how there, why Bear Creek was moved over and where it used to be, it used to go just right out our door here.
So add to that, if you are interested, you have a really great map of the Department of Transportation. We're not even called that yet. They were the State Highway Department from 1951 that shows that perfectly. It should, it's a map that shows the way they were getting the lands ready to build it. It has an overlay of the new Bear Creek Dry Line and it shows your homes and also shows where Bear Creek used to flow.
Thank you.
Utilities.
Uh, so the other thing about this, uh, Scott, uh, there was some concern not only about the Bear Creek Drive, but the utilities for the city as well, waterline. And we had a utility located and learned that the utilities are not down by the toll or the slope down here. They follow the central of Bear Creek Drive about six feet below ground surface. Just so you know. So this is important and I think this is where, yes, uh, Mr. Joey Howard, the, well, I'll just let you introduce yourself. He has some slides. Do you want to?
Sure, I can toggle through.
Sure.
My name is Joey Howard. I'm a, a licensed professional engineer in state of Oregon and state of California. And, uh, I have a bachelor's and master's in, uh, geomorphology and, and hydraulics and civil engineering. So, um, what I would like to quickly do, just, uh, because you'll never get this time back in your life, uh, is to quickly go through things. I have more information on the slides that, uh, at your leisure, should you be so inclined, you can review. Uh, one thing I'd like to clear up is that I'll be referring thing to, uh, the annual uh, frequency of occurrence rather than 100-year flood or 10-year flood. And because those are confusing and they mislead people because actually it's, there's a 1% probability that a flood of that magnitude will occur in any given year. The reciprocal is the 100 is what's often referred to the 100-year flood. So, um, just in the effort of clarity, that's the term and I can use the other term as well. So, uh, we assess the flood impacts using, uh, a two-dimensional hydraulic model. That means that basically it's allowing the flow to move and there's computational nodes that computes the water level. And, uh, we use that to assess, uh, both velocities, uh, water depths and water surface elevations. Uh, to look at pre-project and project conditions so that we could determine what the potential impacts were going to be. We identified that there are no negative impacts in terms of water level because essentially what we're doing is we're removing a berm, uh, that, um, so we're increasing the conveyance area or the flow area. The other thing you can do is calculate shear stress and shear stress is, it's a jargon for just a term that, what that tractive force on the, on the terrain is, so how erosion might occur.
Hey, Joey?
Yes, sorry. Yes.
Well, why was the berm put there in the first place?
That's a good question.
It seems though the berm would be put there to stop the potential of water flowing towards the road and, and the utility wasn't there before.
So, and that's an excellent question, one that I did not find an answer to. We contacted ODFW to see if we could find as-bills. Uh, oh, I'm sorry, ODOT, yeah.
Maybe ODOT.
Uh, Jeff.
Maybe ODOT because they brought the material in from the freeway.
And, and to your point, there are some really good, uh, ortho photos that we, I don't know if they're in the packet we provided, but they have before the project was constructed and after the project was constructed. So we have some good photos of that. But, uh, to your.
Joey, is it reasonable to conclude that the berm was put there to protect the road in the first place?
I think it was side cast material, uh, because it does not appear to be constructed to any engineering standard. The berm does not have a level height. And there, at the upstream end of the berm, the, uh, berm is actually lower. And so what happens is the water comes up. It flows into this area and then during, say, like a 10% or 10-year flood, what will happen is the flows will become hydraulically disconnected, meaning that as you go downstream, the water level in the channel is lower than the water level here because basically you're ponding it back up. And then it squeezes through a narrow area and then drops down into that lower water level, which increases velocity. So what we identified was that actually the presence of the berm creates a narrow area where you have higher shear stresses, erosive forces that come when that flow reenters. So as far as I can tell, and in my discussions with ODOT, um, there are no as-built drawings for it. The, uh, the berm does not look like it was constructed to any, any engineering standards. And, um, and so I think it might've just been side cast material that somebody had and they just put it there. The other problem that you have with that channel right through there is that the floodplain is highly confined through there. And then on the opposite bank, you have a berm that prevents lower flows from entering a housing development. And in that area, there is a significant risk that when that berm breaches, because it will be overtopped, you're going to have a lot of water moving into this area in a rapid air, because it will be a levy failure scenario. So, on the opposite side. So the channel is way too confined in this area. So increasing the floodplain capacity, even though it's really small, is actually a net benefit. And to your point, it may have been placed there for some reason, but during our hydraulic analyses and our erosion analyses, we did not identify it providing, uh, any significant impact on, on protection.
And, and one thing, back in the 50s, we did not have the dam at Immigrant Lake, which is the head of Bear Creek. If you could comment on that, which does control a lot of our flood problems because there used to be worse, worse floods before that.
That, that's an excellent point.
Joey, I just would like you to know that we do have, uh, I do have, uh, a miniature, if we needed to show it later, that shows how the water level actually drops right along Bear Creek Drive during a 10-year flood event. Which is really interesting how you said it actually ramps it up. And with the berm removed, it goes dry on some spots.
So if we still have the stamina to look at that, we can do that later. Um, so essentially this is what I've just said. There's no as-built drawings. And, uh, and we did, uh, so what we're doing is we're taking that material that comprises the berm, that horse material, and we're going to overexcavate at the request of ODOT and we're going to place that material in there. But in doing that, we will plant the interstices, interstices of those rocks so that we can get some plant growth growing up through that rock. And that will help actually reinforce things because now you have the rock, plus you have the root mass in there tying it all together. Um, and yeah, and so I think that would be a good idea. Uh, the other issue that, uh, we were informed that we need to do a letter of map provision, uh, which just means that we will update the, um, the flood insurance rate zones in this area. Uh, the flood rate, insurance rate zones were established in 1977. And they are not accurate for this area. Um, I also worked upstream, upstream on, uh, River Mile 19 in Talent. I was, I was a designer of that project, uh, love it or hate it. And, uh, and so in that area, we have the same issue is that the flood insurance rate map is not accurate in those areas. Uh, I formerly worked for Northwest Hydraulics Consultants that did the D-Form conversion, digital flood rate map conversion. And we just took that old data and put it on Pretty Maps and then updated the elevations, uh, from, uh, the old datum to the present day datum. So, um, so our letter of map provision will better illustrate the flood hazards through there. And, uh, and that's most important for that housing development on the opposite bank because they're going off of outdated information presumably, unless they're doing their own separate hydraulic analysis.
Chair, may I be recognized?
And so, yep, that, um, that's it.
Yes.
Is it okay to ask questions during the presentation? So based off.
So based off of what you just said, it kind of was one of my questions, which is uh, does this work mean that our current floodplains in the residential areas um, that are abutting the creeks right now are going to need to be modified?
I would request that um, that they would be because they are not, they do not currently address the present day hazard in those areas. So I would think it makes sense all along Bear Creek um, to do that.
So I'm trying to think of the impact on the residents and the impact on businesses and business impacts on folks that are given existing mobile home. We have two existing mobile home parks right there and that are just upstream, so uh, or downstream. So are you suggesting that more of their property would be included in the floodplain zone, therefore they're going to be have more regulations um, applied to them? It was that if your project goes forward or if it doesn't either way?
Well, if the letter of map provision will more accurately identify the present day hazard. So and what that present day hazard is, I know this because I did hydraulic modeling, is that those home is that that flood zone is much larger than what it's shown on those maps. And so um, you will have better information and it will better help people to evaluate the risk of living near Bear Creek.
And it looks like their insurance may go up.
Um.
Potentially.
Potentially their insurance may go up.
And is this is this something that you think will happen if you do the project or if you don't do the project either way? Or is this something that will only happen if the project goes forward?
Well, that's a good question because I don't know where they're putting the new houses um, and how much of that area they were going to develop. Uh, but th- there's a potential that uh, yeah, when we map that, that some of those houses, because if the houses were left the way they were, like if you rebuilt exactly in those areas, you'd have a lot of homes in the flood zone. I think the concern is that, real quickly, but the concern is, in my opinion, that if you ignore that, it's irresponsible. I'm not saying you personally, but it's irresponsible to because someday that levy or that berm, because it's unaccredited, FEMA does not recognize it, it will fail. And when it does, you could have loss of human life and uh.
For for clarity, you're still talking about the berm on the.
The berm on the other side that.
The question, this has.
This has nothing to do with this berm. Our berm doesn't change that.
Doesn't make anything to do with our project, but since the condition has been put on our application, we're trying to share with you that this law, that this is what doing the letter of map provision could do for the community. So so.
Yeah, our removal of the berm, on the berm that I am working on designing or designed does not all, the only impact is that it would trigger a letter of map provision. And that triggering the letter of map provision would then provide updated information on flood hazard risks in this area.
Okay.
And so that's the condition that the planning staff is suggesting.
Right. And and currently we could have residents who are underinsured and maybe therefore wouldn't have the adequate coverage that they would need in order to be protected. So this could provide extra protection for.
Yes.
Okay.
Mr. Chair, may I ask a question?
I'm sorry.
Uh, may I ask a question?
Yes.
Um, so can you explain to the planning commission what the removal of the berm does to the base flood elevation in the mobile home park, for example?
So the removal of the berm has, no, I'm sorry, good point. Thank you for correcting. The removal of the rock berm that is adjacent to the bike path would have like a negligible impact. The hydraulic models do not resolve things because that well, because if you look at the square footage, we're talking about, or not square footage, but the width of the floodplain, the width of the floodplain is several hundred feet wide. And we're removing at most forty feet and it's so it it really has a negligible, I could do a difference map and give you the exact difference. But if anything, it really reduces that flood level because you have more conveyance area.
And actually, if I can chime in and if he was reviewing this as I always, some of the upper cross sections show this tiny, tiny negative reduction of about or maybe an inch and a half. So that's not anything we want to say, oh, it's really going to help to remove the berm. But in fact, it it's negligible, but it's it's a slight reduction.
Yeah, you're 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 accurate in saying that. The other thing is when you look at like how wide this is and we're talking about like this much change over this width, you're going to have waves in in the water. I know FEMA likes to get to the hundredth of a foot, but the models don't resolve it that well. We just don't understand the terrain. The other thing is you have the terrain changing under these extreme events, so.
So just to clarify, again, trying to put it in layman's terms, um, you're suggesting that this actually has no impact on the potential flooding for residents who are nearby and may have a potentially small improvement in in adding protections on this side.
Correct.
Of the rock berm. And the comments that you made, this is about adjusting the flood insurance rate map. Um, that's actually going to impact more so the other side.
It is, yes. It, yes.
Okay.
It, and the water levels that are shown on the existing FEMA maps are you, they are wildly inaccurate.
Okay, so we get the benefit of having the cold water in there for fish and wildlife. We have a minimal um, impact on flood and residential areas. We have a potential improvement in the mapping for the risk factors for folks on the other side. Is that surprised what you're saying?
Yeah, I agree with those statements.
And Joey, by overstep, say, Robert, we shouldn't have said that. There's one other thing that the modeling shows and we're trusting the modeling and we're trusting our great engineers to figure out as best we can. Overall, Bear Creek Drive, we also looked at the velocity of the water, whether the berm is in or not in. And in every single modeling scenario, the maximum velocity, think about what it takes in a flood to actually move a car or something like that. It's the maximum velocity is pretty important. In every single scenario, the maximum velocity anywhere along Bear Creek Drive was reduced by about ten percent. I, we have a image we can go over, but like Mr. Howard said, maybe we don't want to go look at more graphs tonight. So it because it it spreads out, there's water that moves closer to the berm in different areas and that one velocity reduced every single.
And and those.
Ten percent, that's.
And that and that impacts erosion, correct? And are we looking at erosion and also potential damage if there is flooding? You're looking at reduced damage from reduced velocity.
Yeah, it's a localized impact where the berm is located, localized. It doesn't change things on the opposite bank. But that model, like the note, so the distance between the computational points where I modeled it, I I'm using between a foot and two feet in this area. So basically, those computational points are pretty close. So we're seeing a change that's localized in this area, but overall, it has a very small impact.
But it decreases velocity, which decreases erosion, right? I'm saying it decreases velocity, but I need the next step of how does that impact me as a resident? How does that impact the people of Phoenix, right?
Would be a negligible decrease. I mean, if I would not say that we would remove the berm to reduce erosion, even though there's a negligible amount of that, it would be um, misstating the magnitude of the impact. It's a reduction, but it's small.
So what we're talking about is on page twenty seven of your packet, your presentation.
Just an extra slide thinking we didn't have that in mind, but since you're looking at it.
Yeah, listen, because I think it describes exactly what you're talking about.
So.
Let's hold, let's hold, let's let's finish one before we go into another.
I have a question regarding what just transpired.
Well, let's, I want to hear the answer and I think slide.
Show, show.
Doesn't doesn't twenty seven kind of explain?
Still my thunder, so don't slide until I get there, okay?
Oh, shame on me.
Oh.
There we go.
Okay.
I think this is a little more.
Uh, I can quickly go through. So what this, what we're.
Let me just.
Oh, sure.
To get you into it and then you take a big step. Just so you can see modeling, okay? This image is uh, and please do look at where I'm pointing because there's a lot on the graph, but it gets you to the moment. So here is Bear Creek and the water is flowing that way. Here's where you drive into the park and this is that nice wetland area. This is where a couple of the springs are. And the warm colors show high velocity water during a ten year flood event. As Joey said, or ten percent, okay? So in Bear Creek, the water is flying through. Plain plain blue is basically standing water. So in this image, you can see that, okay, we actually have water that flows and floods into our wetland area, which is probably great because it's just standing water. And um, so then there's some green water here, right where uh, right across the greenway, okay? The other thing that I would like you to see before Joey mentioned, so the thing is here, where this little dotted line is, is the real tight spot. That's the pinch point. And you can see how the water right next to Bear Creek Drive is is green. That means the velocity is higher there than the standing water here. So as the water comes through, it's running faster right there. As we could actually read it, it's probably, I don't know, three or four or five feet per second. Okay, now, this shot over here shows after the berm is removed. So it's the same modeling work. And you see that over here in the wetland area, the water is moving a little bit, it's not quite standing water, but look over here. Look exactly where the two circles are. This area actually goes dry. It's just what Mr. Howard was explaining because the berm is now gone. And I'm uh.
Yeah, it it, no, no, that that is is correct.
And then if you want to look at the graph on here, you can show it online. What's the quantity, the orange line, this is a line that's following. This is the head, this is up, this this is following the toe, Bear Creek Drive. That's what this graph is. It's it's a graph of what's happening right along that line. This area is upstream. See how it's all bumpy? The the blue line is topography. So that's the bumpy wetland area. That's where the springs are and the trees are and all that. And this stays flat because that's where the greenway is and that's the bike path. Okay, now, the orange line is the velocity of the water. And you can see this peak right here and that's the peak I was just showing you up here. That's the maximum velocity of the water, just can't quite read it.
It's like four.
Or something feet per second. Now also remember that you're getting nervous, the velocity in Bear Creek is bringing across at, you know, the ten year flood. I mean, when have we ever even seen standing water up here? Since ODOT um, built Bear Creek Drive for us all seven, four years ago.
Robert, can you show where the four foot per second point is at?
It would be the peak.
No, that's on, on, no, I'm sorry, on the green.
And.
Yeah.
So from the pinch point, from the pinch point forward, the velocity is increased on Bear Creek dramatically all the way, except for the pinch point, which isn't a concern of the city.
So what?
Pinch point, right.
But I think what he's pointing out is that we reduced it in one area, but we see a higher velocity in the other.
Sure.
And what my point is, is even though that velocity is higher, it's not at an erosive level. It's not significant. And so i- and if you have vegetation in there and other things, it it's just not a significant issue. You're not going to see significant morphologic change because of the shear stresses.
Okay, thank you. And so, yes, so just to kind of, and this maybe addresses what you were trying to help maybe help me with. Um, but this is uh, again, when you're talking about velocity, I can appreciate the fact that the berm creates a pinch, which then increases the the pressure that the water is under because it's going through a more narrow passageway. And when you remove the berm, it does kind of shift and increase the velocity in another area while reducing the pressure in this tighter area. Uh, I, what I'm curious about though, and just again, in layman's terms, when you say velocity, what impact does that have on residents or the land or why is velocity important in this conversation?
So a velocity is a component of erosion. So typically, higher velocities, you will see more erosion. However, the vegetation, uh, the fact that we're replacing that rock, we're putting it down at a lower level, so the material that's in the berm is still going to be there. It's just not going to be mounted up, uh, or at least a lot of that material will be there. And so what's going to, so, yeah, so back to your question, uh, velocity is a proxy for erosion. So the higher velocity, the higher erosion.
Okay, and you're telling us based on your um, your studies that the removal of the berm may have some improvement here and it has no um, significant impact on increase of erosion. Is that right?
That's correct. That's correct. Even though we see an increase in those velocities along there, the reason that we're seeing that is now that whole area, the water is moving in that whole area as opposed to it's ponded on your left hand side, it's ponded on the right hand side, it's moving, so you've seen that difference.
Okay, thank you.
That's a good slide. Thank you.
This is, this is important.
Yes, Mr. Let.
So do you have a slide for a hundred year event or just a ten year?
We only put the ten year, but I do have those slides or I don't, not sure we have it present here, but we did provide it to ODOT uh, as part of the review. The reason that we have the ten or the ten percent ten year and not the hundred year is because at the hundred year, the berm is overtopped and it, you don't really see any impacts. The only place where you really see the impacts is at these lower flows, these intermediate flows.
Okay, and back to a point you made earlier, you had mentioned that people's insurance rates may go up.
And can I see your pointer? See, I'm trying not to pull on anybody. Um, so one thing, so this berm right here, that's the berm, sorry, go ahead.
Oh, sorry. I'm sorry.
Yeah, go ahead.
Can you clarify your question?
Yeah, I'm going to. So I'm just wondering, if this never transpired, if we were never sitting here, rates for insurance for people in our community wouldn't be affected. And if we are sitting here and you carry through with what you're going to do, you s- you you mentioned it as being a benefit to homeowners because then they'll know that they're at a higher risk as will their insurance companies and then their insurance rates would go up.
Well, the, if they were to develop in this area, then their rates would go up.
But the thing, but there's people there now.
No, not in this area right here. Those homes haven't been rebuilt right in there. And the other thing that I would take back is not that this would be of the same similar magnitude, but look at what just happened in Texas. You you know, that was an area that the risk was poorly defined. And do we want to put people in that situation? I think more information is better. It, I think it's um, irresponsible to base housing on bad information that we know is bad. If we didn't know it was bad, then that's fine. That we're not fine, but that's somewhat acceptable. If we know it's wrong, which we do know it's wrong, I have hydraulic analysis that show it's wrong. Then, and yeah, sorry, I, we're.
No, 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 that's okay. I, what housing are you referring to that's current?
I'm thinking barrel like estate, dual barrel.
Okay. Can you go back to the uh, the the map? Uh, the the one I, the one I I saw earlier that I was pointing how Bear Creek flows, that very first picture. And we need to see something there. I was going to answer your question.
If I may also just ask a a question and aid here, um, are I, are any of you insurance experts?
Well, I.
So so there's a chance that we don't know for sure that insurance rates aren't going to go up. It's just that the insurance companies would have additional information.
That's correct.
So so I don't want to live on that assumption, just just for the record.
Yeah, I I did, when I worked at Northwest Hydraulics Consultants, I was a study contractor for FEMA. I mapped forty square miles of Isalia. I mapped eighteen miles of uh, of the Carmel River before the dam was removed and I did several large studies, Town in McLeod and North San Francisco Bay. And and so I do have a fair amount of. And and so I do have a fair amount of experience mapping floodplains for FEMA as a region nine contractor. Um, so I'm comfortable in saying, but you're right, like, I am not an insurance expert. I don't know. I just know that these, the hazard in this area will be uh better understood. And I just think it's irresponsible to not act and protect community members.
But would it affect any other areas besides that area?
No, we're we're just looking, because our project is only modified, uh our letter of map revision is only in our area of our project. We're not remapping the entire city. We're just remapping this other area. Those businesses up on the uh right or the left side of that photo, they're well out of the floodplain. It's really just that uh manufactured home park there that is really at risk.
And the reason why Bear Creek flows straight into it, takes a, this picture doesn't show up very well, but Bear Creek goes straight into that arc, then it curves back into the channel that you see today.
Wait, there's a berm there.
That they have.
That they have.
That they have, correct. So to me, this project is such a small part of the whole Bear Creek. Yeah, I think we're just, I think we're just kind of floating around here that that it's such a small portion of any liabilities or I I just, I just don't see it. I just don't see it. Bear Creek, uh the mo- the the park, you're right. That's that, that is a whole different thing because the the creek goes right into there. But it curves and comes back here. Now we're looking at this very small portion here of a little berm that's gonna come out, and I don't know that it's gonna affect, I, that's what I'm hearing here.
So Mr. Chair, I'm just about my my, maybe I got the right answer, the answer I wanted to hear. I think you're saying that homeowner insurance rates would not go up because the of the information you send to the city and to FEMA, because it only impacts undeveloped areas as far as letting insurance companies know, hey, if that's developed in the future, then you're gonna have a problem. But all the homes that are currently in the city, you're assuring us that they would not be.
Not reassuring, I apologize, uh if, I did not mean to say there could be homes in that one area, that recent development that's being reconstructed, that could be in and that could be impacted by the zone change.
I do want to just be be careful about speculating because we are all speculating about this and nobody in here is an insurance expert. So I just hate to deliberate too much, but I appreciate the science behind what you're you're telling us.
Okay, can we, we have, we have a question here. Thank you.
Would development in that area, the the west of Bear Creek, would that development process trigger its own FEMA mapping, religious evaluations that have been intended to this project?
No, but what I will say is FEMA is working with the region to remap the area. Now, that is going to take some time before that is done. So from a staff's, from staff's perspective, understanding the the data correctly is not a bad thing. Will it impact the residents over there? It it is absolutely gonna have an impact on how those mobile homes are established over there. They already have a floodplain application approved, so all's we're looking at is elevation certificates now. But this is why I asked about the base flood elevation. If the base flood elevation increases over there at all, many of those mobile homes are gonna be three or four feet up off of the ground instead of two feet up the ground. So, but that that is not for the planning commission, in my opinion.
That's right.
Planning commission to make a decision on this. The the requirement is, is that if you approve this application, the property owner has to be notified. Property owners or those impacted have to be notified, presumably before the appeal period's over so that they can appeal the application if they so desired. Um, but what I, what I will say though is, um, you know, we are dealing with, and you can, I I'm I'm asking this question now so you can address it before the public hearing closes. We are, we are modeling what we think will happen. We are anticipating based on historic data what will happen. We are gambling with our city infrastructure and forty-five thousand other residences infrastructure when it comes to the water supply that is in that road. And that is, you know, the staff's recommendation was still for approval, but we had a condition that we are adamant that be applied to this application to protect the residents from that, you know. Is it gonna protect it from failing? Probably not. If it's gonna fail, it's gonna fail. But we have to have a responsible party that is going to react to and fix that problem if in fact we run fifty thousand people out of water.
So you're talking about the infra, the six foot under Bear Creek Drive, the water line.
Correct. So the tap line is.
That's what you're talking about.
It is deep, but I will say it's not the center line of the road because we just did seismic retrofits on it. It's actually on the, it's on the toe of the slope. Everybody that just drove down there knows that that's where we just cut it. So uh we have to be careful about where we say where it's at. But what I will say is, is that I w- we believe we staff and we hope the planning commission through this action believe that this is a good project. But we have to have safeguards because we are obligated to protect the public health and safety of our community and those that this tap line runs to.
That that's one of my listed questions. Who who's responsible if something should happen?
It's, don't do the project, right? Is that the question? Like if if now if.
If we, if you remove the berm and we had a catastrophic event, the city would be on the hook or cities would be on the hook for replacing that line and getting that water service installed. So that's why the condition of approval to say that if the property owner chooses to remove this berm, which I I do feel like, and there's probably not a ODOT representative here, but if there was, if this was the Oregon Department of, you know, state highways, transportation system, they would not grant the approval of the removal of that berm because it's their facility that they want to protect. And we, we are trying to do the same thing. We're saying, yes, you can remove it, but what we need is some assurance because we are working solely on modeling. A lot of us have lived here fr- from the ninety ninety-seven flood. Some may have lived here in the sixty-four flood. I I wasn't even born, but um, there, there's, there's a fair amount of concern and that's, that's the concern of staff.
If if that is, you're concerned if that's true, or it probably is. But but from what I understand, the berm really doesn't serve anything. The berm is, if you want to do and protect that, then you're talking about a step beyond what these guys are trying to do here. That berm does very little. It's not an adequate berm to protect that forty.
Then there should be no issue signing the de-declaration saying that there's no issue.
Right.
At this point in time, if something were to happen and we were to have a ninety-seven flood here and something were to happen and we were to have tap impacted and we didn't have this project, who'd be responsible?
We still would be responsible.
Okay.
We being the 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 resident or the municipalities of.
So we're responsible for it now. Um, the studies show that there's no increase in flood damage or potential and no uh increase for erosion. Um, so bypassing this in in the applicant has agreed to take responsibility. Is that right? Has the applicant agreed?
Well, that's the condition of approval. So if you approve this application with that condition, there's a de-declaration signed to the property owning the responsibility of of fixing that infrastructure should it fail. But if the modeling is, i- if there's confidence in the modeling, then then there should be no issue with the state or the property owners signing the de-declaration.
You had something?
Well, two things though, actually. One, um, I I feel like we might be confused by the terminology. It sounds like um structurally, we really should be referring to this as as rubble um and debris and not as a berm. Because there is no structural definition or or actual sign that it is a protective barrier. And everything we're doing is based off of the assumption, because we're calling it a berm, it's giving the assignment that somehow it's providing protection.
I agree with that assessment.
I mean, I feel like we're having.
Sorry, Scott had his hand up. I'm sorry.
Wait till you see our next slide, but I wanted to go down here, Mr. Let, because I want to make sure that you're all understanding. And maybe you are, and I'm just reiterating, but we went off onto a very important topic about the letter of map revision. But you had mentioned, well, this project. So the discussion about the letter of map revision, which is a condition that you folks are suggesting we have, is the issue that would generate the whole discussion about the flood insurance and all that. It's not our project. It's the condition itself of requesting the letter of map revision. So does everybody understand that?
I understand, but the but the revision map would be issued if project is approved.
The way, because of the condition that you put off.
And that may affect homeowners and it may not.
But if the condition which we've heard about four or five days ago.
I understand.
That condition wasn't on there. It's of the project itself, the the rubble removal is not going to cause those issues.
And and that clarifies my question. It may and may not affect homeowners if this goes through.
Right, a- a- and not to belabor it too much further, but according to Mr. Moody, FEMA is already looking uh at reassessing risk and if I am correct. And so what they do, they'll review the hydrology and they'll update the maps. And so that will supersede anything we do. Because they will have studied it in detail in a larger area. And so if they're already doing this, this is somewhat academic and it's more of a transitory change in the mapping.
Your letter of revision would take place before the FEMA.
Yeah, but then once FEMA does theirs, it will supersede what we did.
Yeah, but to be clear, the letter of mapper's vision is revived, is required by FEMA, not the city. It's our condition of approval. But when there's in-channel work done, the letter of mapper vision has to be done by, it had to be done. Correct.
Got it. Maps can trigger other.
It was required when we did Bear Creek River Mile nineteen, which is up in talent.
Okay, I won't belabor it. I'm very clear, right?
No, and and I want to make sure everybody is clear on this, and I probably didn't help by rambling.
No, you're fine, you're fine. Um, so did we have anything else from?
Yes, we still have more slides.
Miss, Mr. Chair, if I may though, um, you know, we've, we've gone, we have, we have interrupted with some questions that have been been timely.
Yes.
Um, but I think it's time to move on to the to the other comments, and then they have an opportunity uh to rebut any comments at the end where they can make some last final statements, but we really do need to move this on.
I.
For the sake of time, for the sake of time, th- th- how about this? For the sake of time, can you, if we give you five minutes, can you just?
Except you're probably gonna have questions with the next slide.
And then let's hold the questions and so on like that because we do have, uh, I want to hear from the citizens that are gonna testify in favor of it. Those who oppose to it. So is, let's just hold the questions if you have five minutes, please.
So the, one of the conditions that you've now all mentioned was uh that we have an issue with. We received these conditions four or five days ago, and I want to read it out loud since you're paraphrasing it. Uh, prior to alteration of the water court, the applicant shall provide the city with a de-declaration by the property owner. Just ODOT who constructed the Bear Creek Drive for you all seventy-four years ago. They guarantees protection of the adjacent city infrastructure, including all costs associated with the repair, replacement of the segment of Bear Creek Drive and the water line if damaged by any event that could have been prevented if the berm had not been removed. We don't think the project's gonna go through that way, just so you know. And we request that this condition be removed. And I'd like to lead the bottom. We're confident that the wide degree of the interagency collaboration, the regulatory oversight we already all have, coupled with the applications, comprehensive research, the analysis, findings, the design recommendations, should provide enough assurance that the project benefits and emphasis on addressing public safety and a potential damage to the of infrastructure. Would you? If you sign that, would you have your neighbor sign that? We have not heard yet from ODOT if they would, but uh how in the world will we know if something happens that it's, that whatever happened is because the little rubble got removed? It just, it's, it's rather litigious if I may say so. And we just, we request that it's been removed or at least some communication between ODOT and the city because it's the city and the state that are, you know, working together on that that highway, the the highway there. You have been all along. So I know you probably want to talk about, but you've asked me to go through. That's the one issue that we have had with this approval.
Who asked for that condition before it was placed?
Please continue.
Pardon?
Who asked for the, this condition to be put in place? Was it ODOT or?
Staff recommended it.
Staff recommendation. Okay, thank you.
So, two more slots. Benefits to fees. I just need to read them out loud quick. Because this is really the big picture, even though it sounds like, well, I shouldn't say. Blue American will be really connected as it was in the past. Cold water refugia will be available for threatened vogels and other wilde's wild buck. We will have floodplain connectivity again, a very narrow part of Bear Creek where it's needed. We will be monitoring this program as part of our budget for three years. That area will have more of an open view. There'll be more safety along the greenway because of the fuel reduction and fire protection that the invasive plants are there. Place by uh the planting plan and canary trees and uh native education. There's a possibility for a potential additional public park and trail area if this community wants it. The project itself is gonna provide outreach and education. And you've seen a hundred and fifty pages and a bunch of slides. If any of you wanted to see this for yourself and get a real feel for it, I, that's what we need to. To really make a decision, I I think. Come and see for yourself. And for the folks that don't get into all the technical, look, here's an artist rendition of the benefits. Connected community. Connected floodplain, fish grass. See, there's, there's the Blue American Creek going into Bear Creek. And there's maybe one of those pedestrian bridges that we've talked about for many years in our community. Why not have everything kind of flowing through? That's it. Let's make comparisons.
Well, thank you. So, um, yeah, in uh looking at the clock, we want to try to get this uh closed up and not have to go into overtime here. Um, so at this time, we'd like testimony from citizens in support of the application. These, is those, is that? Is that this, these?
Um, this one's just in support.
And these are not? I don't know.
I believe they're all speaking on seven A as well as other calls.
Alrighty, uh, so we have a support. Start with, um, how do you say your name? Yes, yes, it is. Yes, um. Yes, if you come forward, please, and give your uh name better than I'm pronouncing it. Um, and um, your address. And and again, we're talking in support.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
So my name is Tiziana De Rovere. And I live in one-one-four Breckenridge Drive, Phoenix. I am absolutely enamored with this project as a citizen. Because I know I've been at the, at the spring. I've seen two of the springs. And they have such a quality of regeneration. Not only I'm in support for this because of the regeneration of, you know, the possibility of supporting um, the fish, the 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 salmon, who is very important. But also because the springs, the 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 area around the springs, but if they are developed with a trail, will also bring people to Phoenix to to restore themselves. It's an inspiration. So I think it will become a a. So I think it will become a, a more and more Phoenix, a city, a town of gardens. And of recreation for also the soul. And and a place of quiet and of beauty that is so, so important. So I am all for it on all these many levels and I think we're going to create a beautiful town here. More and more with that is going to attract more people here.
Thank you, thank you for your testimony. Um. And again, we'll try to keep it to three minutes if you could, and I'm not a strong. Just keep it to three minutes and, um, but anyway, so I, I can't. We have one here for support, but, um, I'm not sure on, um, uh, Greg, Gregoff, Gregoff, Greg. Greg. How do you? G E A F F R E S.
My name is Jeff Grace.
I'm sorry, yeah.
I'm nasty.
Are you in favor? Well, then come on up.
Not resident of the city, um, I am a biologist with the Oregon Department of Fish and Wildlife.
Oh, well, welcome, thank you.
Thank you, I am a fish biologist by training, but, um, I currently act as the Rogue Watershed Stream Restoration Biologist, so. Thank you for having me here today. Um, I want to mention really quickly, there are several species of Anadromus fish that exist in Bear Creek. Summer and winter steelhead, which are estate sensitive species as well as fall Chinook. Um, and finally federally listed, uh, Coho, which are of the Southern Oregon, Northern California, uh, distinct population units. And finally, we also have some resident rainbow and coastal cutthroat. Uh, and that is just the fish species, there are a plethora of other, um, important aquatic species that support our, um. Native, uh, streams and rivers. There are three factors in Bear Creek that limit these species. That is peripheral peripheral connection, which is access for fish to access wetlands, side channels, um, and flood plains. These are important for fish during low flows to access areas with cool water, which has been demonstrated that these springs bring in. As well as during high flows, they need access to areas with velocity refugia. Because if they stay in the main stem of Bear Creek or the Rogue River, they get flushed right out. They need access to cold, cool water temperatures in the summer, as the graph demonstrated and as, uh, these folks have shown. Summer temperatures in Bear Creek are lethal for adults and for juvenile, uh, salmon and steelhead. And finally, they are limited by passage, passage to these areas with peripheral connection. Uh, passage to areas with cool water temperatures. These species and this plan fall within state and federal conservation and recovery plans. I want to mention three, the ODFW multi-species plan covers, uh, cutthroat. Uh, salmon and steelhead and specifically mentions. These limiting factors as being what is needed to address remediation of human development. Uh, and other actions on the landscape to benefit our aquatic species. The ODFW Fall Chinook Plan for the Rogue Basin further mentions specifically in Bear Creek access to, uh, these springs. And there's actually a, uh, citation from as early as two thousand and seven, the importance of these cold water springs to our fish species. And finally, the, uh. National, uh, Marine Services, um, Southern Oregon, Northern California Recovery Plan for Coho Salmon. Additionally, mentions Bear Creek is having high intrinsic potential for restoration and this project does support. All of these plans, so thank you for having me here today and, uh, I do support this project.
Thank you, thank you for being here. Um, so we have one, uh, two more, uh, Eugene, uh, in favor of?
Eugene Weir, five-seven-one-one, South Pacific Highway. Um, I am really familiar with this area, I've worked in stream restoration with Rogue Valley Council of Governments and then with the Freshwater Trust for almost the last twenty years.
Oh, wow.
Done a lot of work in this reach of the stream and I support this project for all the reasons that have been discussed already. Um, fish, wildlife, people, I mean, let's face it, that berm is ugly. And we didn't know it was there because it was uncovered by invasive weeds, which are basically unmanageable in a situation like that. Where you've got nothing but rugged rock underneath, so there's a lot of reasons that I think this thing should go away and I'd like to not see it again. In the park and in my community and improvement, but. I'm really want to just focus on the condition that was put on, uh, chapter four condition, the deed restriction. That needs to be removed. That statement is there to kill this project, not to enhance it. And in my opinion, and that statement, I mean, having done a lot of work with ODOT over the years in my stream restoration projects. It's a very large agency, they have local staff here, but something like that, a request like that would have to go all the way up to the top. And then be reviewed by DOJ, you're going to have a, a huge amount of people that have to get involved. And a timeframe that could be years in order to get through that. And it just wouldn't accomplish anything good, we can already accomplish the same concerns or address them through design. And modeling and other factors, we don't need ODOT to draft a letter, they won't because the process will be too high. And like Robert mentioned, what neighbor would sign that, I mean, what person would sign that? You know, it's very vague, how do we calculate what could have happened? I mean, if we get a hundred year flood, that berm and the water line might be the least of our worries really in this community, so thank you.
Thank you. So at this time, we have one more, um, Paul Kay, uh, he's online. Uh, Paul, are you there?
Hello, yes.
There he is. So Paul, um, we will give you, uh, keep, keep it as close to three minutes as you can, please.
Thank you. I've already written other material about, uh, field visits and ex parte contact. I'm not going to repeat that, I'm glad to know a couple commissioners did visit the field. So we're getting a vote that's, I think, more fully informed by a field visit. I want to comment on. Being marveled. By the intelligence of the applicants. We have here in our community, top level engineers and scientists, I just think that's fascinating. I also want to compliment the intelligence and the responsibility of our planning staff. And that comes down to. Looking out for. The financial protection of our infrastructure. I think it's a reasonable request. And I've done a little bit of reading, Department of Justice and ODOT. The Oregon Department of Transportation is an state agency. That does not accept unlimited liability. It's unlikely. The in a, in. A deed declaration in very simple form would be approved. I won't speak for the agency. I will look forward to seeing how we. Make. Good compassionate communication between the city of Phoenix. And the Oregon Department of Transportation to, um, define an acceptable agreement. That will let the project go forward. And in the event of a catastrophic failure, will be fairly defined ahead of time. In terms of who's responsible and how we determine. If the. Um. The dunage that's buried and called a berm made a difference or not. And so lastly, I want to say. The work we're doing for. Watershed restoration. Is based on collaborative decision-making. And look at the evolution of our relationships since the time of the flood. We have worked hard and developed. Mutuality and trust and I'm looking forward to that continuing. At least it, it's at least as important as the restoration work. We don't get behind the salmon with a beaten stick and move them up the, the river. We rehabilitate the habitat and they move into it. Likewise, I invite a betterment of relationships here and we're achieving that. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you, Paul. Well deserved applause. Um. So I don't have any, anymore, anybody else feeling a little bashful and didn't sign up and want to speak in favor of this? If not, then we'll ask for citizens, citizens neutral. Or want to testify against this application. With nobody coming forward or raising their hand, I guess I don't know.
Before you close the hearing, um, staff has a recommendation.
Sure, well, applicant respond, rebuttal?
Um, if there's rebuttal, there, there was no comments against.
Exactly, so no rebuttal needed, but, or I guess follow up with, unless you guys can think of anything else, I think it's.
So.
I think they did have a rebuttal.
So.
No, this is an opportunity for rebuttal.
So I guess, yes, they can, but I guess what I'm going to ask the planning condition, the planning commission to do is to continue the hearing to August eleventh. So that staff has the opportunity to contact. The Talent Ashland Phoenix Group through the Rogue Valley Council of Governments to get their official opinion on the water line. And to, um, talk with the Oregon Department of Transportation and the Department of Justice on what that deed declaration would look like or what that. Requirement or restriction would look like on the property. That was not intended, first of all, to kill the project, it was intended to protect the infrastructure. And yes, the deed declaration language is very loose, I agree that it probably needs a lot of tightening up. Um, but the only fair way to do that is to keep the public hearing open. So that we could bring this information back and the applicant can have an opportunity to comment on the new information. Anybody would have the opportunity to comment on the new information. And then the planning commission could close the hearing at that time and render a decision.
Can I ask a question?
Uh, I mean, let me. Swallow all of that, so, um. I still think we're at the point of rebuttal.
Well, again, so the public, so if, if the commission.
In other words, what you were saying is. You want that in there and I don't know if they're willing to accept that.
Well, if they don't want to have the, the hearing continue, that's fine, staff is asking for the planning commission. To keep the, to keep the hearing open, which the planning commission can do, whether the applicant wants to or not.
All right.
But I feel like it, I feel like there is more information that probably could be gathered around the deed declarations so that we could make a reasonable decision.
I think that's.
But the rebuttal part of it was, I guess what I'm trying to get at with the rebuttal part is, is that the hearing will remain open, so. When staff presents the new evidence on August eleventh. It would be a continued public hearing where the applicant would be able to come, they would have the application seven days in advance of the hearing like they had this time. And then we would move forward and they could come and bring another presentation to talk about this condition. If there's new findings or new evidence that supports something different, they would have an opportunity to comment.
A chair may be recognized.
Yes.
Thank you. So, uh, one of my questions is, is, uh, would you be providing any scientific evidence that would support? Um, the need for this? Um. I forgot what you call it, the condition.
I suppose if I need to.
I mean, I'm, I'm just wondering, because we have a significant amount of science that is showing that we are not increasing the risk, but we might be decreasing it. And so I'm wondering if for the sake of condition, uh, i- if we're going to impose a condition, is the city have any evidence to suggest that this would increase risk?
Well, I suppose when I produce a staff report with revised findings, that evidence would be there for the commission to consider. And my dad, I can't, I don't have an answer to that question right now, my job as a city official is to protect our water infrastructure, period. And we could have very easily recommended denial of this application because we feel like there is. A risk posed to that infrastructure that not only impacts our city, but impacts the residents of two other cities. So I, I feel like this is the best option to give additional information. And have the opportunity for the applicant to respond to that additional information, it's not. Un, i- 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 it happens all the time in hearings where you continue the hearing.
I, I, another question, I was, I use another way of saying this question is that, um. What is the ground, I appreciate the fact that you have concern. What is, what are the scientific basis or grounds for that concern? Can you tell me where that concern comes from?
Yeah, it comes from the fact that we're dealing with modeled data and we're not dealing with actual real data. We're not dealing with actual events, so we're taking a model. And models are only as good as the information put in, not saying that the information that they did, they put in is bad. But what I'm saying is, is that it is simply a model.
But I, so what would we be dealing with i- as opposed to dealing with a model if you get more information?
Well, the question is.
The first thing I know from a model is reality, so I'm, I'm just trying to say what else would we have? Besides a model to go off of if you had more time.
So the question, the, the issue is, is with the open-ended deed declaration, not necessarily whether or not. And maybe there's some with them as well, that having a deed declaration at all. But if, if there is no concern from the applicant that there is the potential for failure of our water system with the removal of that. Then whatever restriction we can put that is agreeable by the Oregon Department of Transportation and the Department of Justice. Should be sufficient, should be allowed, should be recommended and, and should be the condition of approval of the planning commission. I, I don't think it takes scientific data to protect a what if. We're talking about a, a, a one percent chance flood. And it was mentioned here before, we wouldn't do that with residents, so why would we do it with our public infrastructure?
So I guess in the very, I, I'm guessing then the burden of proof, uh, were, were we asking? Are we asking ODOT to as- uh, assume burden of proof? So will they then?
Assume responsibility.
Well, but how do you prove responsibility? So, so who's, who's responsible for burden of proof, is it the city that's responsible for showing that this project, uh, actually? So we have to show in a catastrophic event that it was actually the removal of the rubble. That caused it, or is it actually ODOT if there's a flood that you say, oh, we're going to charge you because our water line is damaged, you guys have to prove it wasn't you?
So the issue that was raised is, is that the deed declaration request was too vague, who would sign that? I agree. I didn't know how else to write it. The, the, the idea is, is that there is some assurance that if or when. That fails, that our water system can be brought back online and it is not the result, it's not the city's responsibility. If that's not something that ODOT can get to. Then we will find out through this process of continuing the hearing and, and working with them to see if that's the issue. The other thing is, is that they could bond for the improvements or the repair.
Which would be on taxpayers?
No, so they would have to bond for the cost to repair that, that section of tap line should it fail. That's a, that's a huge expense that staff was not really wanting to recommend.
I think the, I think one of the big questions that I have is, is. Uh, I'm looking at what grounds we have to make this request, I understand you're looking at the language of it. But I'm looking at, um, wh- what grounds do we have that suggests that this is a necessary component?
Well, again, you have a conditional use permit, which allows you discretion to make decisions if there are. Concerns, if the, if the planning commission doesn't share the same concern, then the planning commission can approve this application and remove that condition of approval. It is, it is, it does not matter to me, it's, this is the body of this commission making that decision. Staff only made the recommendation, so.
Yeah, I think if I'm being asked to consider this, this piece, then I'm just, I would like to see why it is that we are asking for it and I don't see. Um, anyway, I don't, nor not deliberating now, but.
Well, yeah, you're gonna, I mean, you can, you're gonna have to make a motion and, and where you don't have to make a motion one way or the other.
Okay, we have another, uh, uh, Commissioner Luz, you have something to ask.
You're asking for thirty days. There's no time, there's no. I know they want to get it done now, but there's no huge rush or there's no, uh. Our ticking clock that says it has to be done at a certain point in time, you want thirty days to do what you gotta do? I'm okay with it, it's only thirty days. And then, then they can, then holding the rebuttal until. The next meeting, then they can rebut or talk about what they want to talk about, so they can still, still continue their rebuttal and still contain what we're doing now and then delivering. I'm okay with it, it's only thirty days, no biggie to me.
Well, one comment I just have to that is a question about like funding opportunities and in waterworks periods and the project timeline. If this project is supposed to happen this year, they've got a pretty small window to do the work before it, and anything has to be shut down. And then there's also, it seemed like there's a lot of grant funding and, you know, without a quick time, you can usually ask and get a deadline extended, but. I think that making those assumptions. But I think that making those assumptions, we need to find out if those are inadvertent kill switches too.
So Scott, can you answer that? Or, or I'm sorry, Joey, can you answer that? What was your, what was your window? What, what was your scheduling?
So September 15th is the end of the in-water work period. And so we would need to complete this prior to September 15th. The other issue that I have concerns with, with Mr. Moody's or the staff comments is he's absolutely right. It's a numerical model. However, when fault is tried, when we try to figure out who's at fault, it's, they're going to resort to numerical models. They're going to resort to forensic. It's, it's something that there is so little impact with the removal of this rubble pile. That the models are not good enough. And the other thing is we just don't have velocities that support large scale erosion of the roadways.
I think the question was timing.
Well, oh, so with respect to timing, we run into the issue with the fact that we have to get this project completed by September 15th. If we do it this year, the concern about not doing this this year is that we have funding that we can complete for this year. Whereas if we're trying to forecast out how much more this will cost next year, diesel prices will go up. Yeah, you're right. It may, it may not, but historically it has, and from last year to this year, prices have increased quite a bit for construction. Like for a 10 wheel end dump, they've gone up from like about $130 to about $180 an hour.
I think that answers. Please, yes, Scott or Bob?
I was involved with a lot of the grant writing and application and so forth, working with ODFW and the PFA grant. And the grant is not going to be there forever. You know, I mean, we've already delayed this one year. And not only is it costing more money, but the grant has a limit. And we, and I talked to Andy this morning, the grant coordinator, and he said, there is no more money left of increased funding. So I mean, we're kind of in a bad spot. I just want to point that out.
Thank you. It's a good point.
I'm sorry, how long has the project been in the works?
I'm sorry?
How long has the project been in the works now?
Two years.
Two years?
He started this project when he said.
We've had two hours to ask.
So if, if I can just be clear, the application was deemed complete only a couple of months ago, if even that. So yes, the land use process takes some time. But I want to be clear that it's the time and effort that was taken to get to this point, not the fact that we have expired our timeframe. It was, it was deemed complete on May 14th, it looks like, or June 17th. June 17th is when the application was deemed complete. We're sitting here less than a month from this. We tried to get this through as quickly as we can, and hence the reason I'm asking to go back and make sure that it's right. Because we do feel like it is a good project, but we have to protect our, we have to protect our infrastructure. And so we are only statutorily allowed to take 120 days to deem or to approve this application. We could have very easily sat on it and went through and did, you know, an enormous amount of research and waited until the 120th day, but we did not do that.
Question, Joey. First of all, I just want to commend this whole application, the amount of advocacy, cooperation, and back to the role of responsiveness to concerns raised by ODA engineers and my staff. It's just extraordinary and almost slow, but that's how it should work. And it's, this is just an amazing project and I will commend all of you here for your commitment to the project. Just to kind of satisfy kind of very busy or middle ground. And Joey, I feel your concerns about what you're saying, that the model shows that this kind of, you know, the flooding concern, velocity concerns are, they're there, they're not, they're, they're. They're there, but they're not overstated.
I would say the velocity, if we look at the changes in the erosive potential, it's, it's a negligible change.
The biggest benefit to this is taking care of the cold water, the fish, the repairing things. I guess I'm wondering, just in an effort to trot along the middle ground. Is there another version or iteration, dare I ask, of this project that might satisfy staff concerns about? The safety of the infrastructure that would also allow a surface connection of that coal lacquer from Lohearn. Creek without going as far as.
We could armor, we could use some of that material from the berm and place it along the toe of that slope. That's one thing that could be done. I just don't think that the concerns are founded in engineering principles. And so if we want to take a material and place it along there, that's fine. And I have no problem with that because it can be planted. But the concerns that are being brought up are really an emotional response about there is a concern that if something bad happens. We need to have it fixed. But that, there's no relationship between that and the project.
Do we want to take a vote on whether or not?
So at this time.
Do you want to take a vote on whether or not to extend?
The public hearing.
No, we have to.
We have to. We have to vote.
Well, are we in?
Would like to accept staff's request, you could make a motion to continue the hearing to this day. Otherwise, you don't have to make a motion. It was staff asking to do that. But if staff's not, if the commission does not want to extend that, then you move on to your deliberation after you close the hearing.
I will definitely reach out to that Ashland Phoenix project or part of them to talk to them and get their comments on concerns about.
That's what I'm asking for now.
So again, I just keep going to where, how we got to that condition anyway. I mean, I think there's the emotional response and I'll just say personally, my first concern was erosion because it's so close. But I have to rely on science and data and we have Army Corps of Engineers, we have DSL, we have DEQ, we have, we have ODFW. We have hydraulic studies, we have erosion studies, we have so many things there that I think we have so much evidence based that it's safe. That I feel like in order to pose a condition, we might need to. I'm looking for where the science is to say that it's needed. And so that's where I think I'm struggling with that piece is I don't know where it came from. To start with, other than the concept that potentially maybe it could, but.
The science, the science is not there at this point. But the planning commission has to own this decision.
Mr. Wilcox, please chime in.
Thank you, sir. I just wanted to add, you know, because it's a conditional use review. That gives you the ability to, it doesn't say, here's the minimum standard. If you get this data, if you get this feedback, this project result, then you can impose this requirement. You, you have a discretion right off the bat to, and, and you know, a deed declaration or some kind of agreement. If they, you know, if you stand by the project should cost them nothing, right?
It depends on who has a burden of proof. It's going to be, that's significant. But again, I, I, I feel like we're, we're. But yeah, are potentially coming from an emotional standpoint of being afraid of some projected outcome without having any evidence to back it up. And so I feel like we, personally, I feel like I like looking at the evidence and the science backing something in order to be able to say whether or not it's a reasonable. Request to ask of an applicant at this point in time. So I, I think though, what we're looking at is the, the question before the commission is now about time. Is that correct? Whether or not we want to give another 30 days. In which case more evidence could be presented, in which case we would have another, continue the hearing. And in which case there could be more rebuttal and more requests for more information and they may need to provide more information. And so it could go beyond 30 days, most likely, right? It would go beyond 30 days.
So if I understand correctly, the, the additional information is going to come from staff, correct?
Staff, the engineer, RV cog and ODOT.
Well, can, may I? So, so like, can you assure us that in 30 days you'll have everything that you need? For a second hearing and that it won't be continued after that?
Yeah, I don't have a reason to continue it after that. I mean, again, I don't really. I mean, if the planning commission does not want to continue this hearing and wants to make a decision based on the information you have, then, then you can do that. But alls I'm asking based upon the pushback from the condition is, is that we try to find, as Commissioner Norpson says, a middle ground. So that we can, we can feel, we can feel safe with this, with this decision. But if that's not the, if that's not the desire of the committee, I mean, and keep in mind that we have 120 days to make a decision. We did our best. We, we sent notice out the day that this application was deemed complete. Two weeks after that, Jeff started writing the findings. We, we have 14 days comment period. We take in all that comment. We didn't do any extra. We just did what the information was there. And as we're writing the findings, these are the things that we come up with to recommend. Again, we could have just sat on it and, and taken a lot more time, maybe which in hindsight might have been better. But that wouldn't have, optics would not have been great.
But I think the concern of the commissioner and probably this group is that it would be continued over and over and over again and get bumped next year possibly. But you can, I know you can't guarantee a hundred percent, but you can assure us.
Well, you can assure you because you're the ones that have to make the decision. So even if I came and asked, which I, I'm not going to do now at this point, you could say no and not continue the hearing. They could ask to continue the hearing.
Okay. Thank you.
Do you want a deliberation on whether or not we should do another 30 day extension for staff to get more information?
So right now I'm going to close the public hearing.
No.
You can't do that.
But yeah.
You gotta, we have to vote on whether to do that. Just don't close.
We have to deliberate and make a motion to, to extend it or not. That's what's on the table is whether or not we're going to extend the public hearing. If you close it, we can't reopen it.
It's a planning commission decision, not the chair's decision to close the hearing.
Is that right? I thought.
Yeah. So what, if there's.
The format is, is, is close the public hearing, open it up to commissioners.
Right. You could close the hearing after, after all of the testimony, but staff made a request to the commission to continue the hearing to August 11th. If there's no motion, then there's no action and you, you close the public hearing. So if there is no motion to extend to August 11th. Then, then you move on to close the public hearing and you make your deliberation.
I move that we extend to August 11th. I'll make the motion.
I would like to deliberate.
I have a point of. Zach, you wanted to talk to ODA and you wanted to talk to RV cog, Phoenix, Ashland, Talent? Is that the reason that you're requesting?
Yes. Yes.
I think my challenge is that it feels like a fishing expedition, to be honest. I, I feel like, I, I feel like we've had a lot of evidence presented and that the city has had a chance to be able to. Ask for conditions, ask for information throughout the entire application process. And while the application was just complete a month ago, that was not when it was started or when the dialogues with the city was started. So I, I think it, my concern is it feels like a fishing expedition that we're trying to go look for information in order to try to justify. A position that we just don't have evidence for. So I, on that regard, and based off of the fact that there's so much evidence and so much work put into this. And the vast amount of agencies and scientists who have reviewed this plan, as well as the minimal impact that we're looking at. The fact that this berm is not actually something, it's not a berm, it's rubble. And it has no engineering purpose and sometimes actually creates problems instead of solutions that we're actually looking at potential improvement to our area. I'm, I don't see a need to delay the, the benefits that our community can have or make these folks do any more work than the vast amount of work that they already have done. At this point in time for evidence that isn't there. Again, to me, it feels like a fishing expedition. So I would actually be interested in taking the vote today, including removing that criteria.
Well, there's a motion on the table.
We're deliberating, but yes, so that's my reasons for saying I think we should move forward.
We have a motion and a second.
Now we're having deliberation.
Well, sure.
Okay. So I don't find it being a fishing expedition. I think that's kind of derogatory language to throw at, throw at staff. They've requested it's 30 days. It's not going to make a break and I can guarantee you, I'll vote in 30 days. If the, if, if staff doesn't come up with information that they're looking for, 30 days from now, I'll vote. I'll say, that's it, staff, you've had your 30 days. We're done here. And it's, I think it's fair to give them 30 days and say, okay, you've gotten the information, let's hear it. Or you haven't gotten the information, too bad. You want 30 days, you've got it, let's go, next meeting. That's what I would do. I don't think it's emotional.
Okay.
It's a fish.
I, I think I would be inclined to, well, we do do, after you do the motion, we do deliberations. Yeah. Am I correct on the process? So we're doing deliberations at this point in time, so we don't have to rush to the motion.
Well, we're doing deliberation and I get my.
Yeah, yeah.
To me, I totally don't, you know, I totally don't agree to extend this thing. I think I'd like to end it tonight. I mean, I heard enough information. I don't think that there's anything more to.
And I would be inclined to agree, Commissioner Lutz, if, if I found that there was evidence for which the city had grounds for the concern. If there was evidence, but we don't have evidence. And so why it feels like, and I don't mean it in a derogatory way, I just mean it in again, a layman's term. And is, is that it seems like we're looking for evidence and I don't, if we had evidence and was like, we have a, we have evidence of a concern and we need to explore it. I would be more inclined to, to, to an extension, but I just don't see that there's evidence. I feel like we're looking for evidence that so far hasn't appeared. Throughout all of the vast amount of review this project's had.
Alrighty. Do you have anything more to add? Okay. So let's vote on the, on the motion. We'll call.
Commissioner Lutz?
Yes.
Commissioner Monso?
Yes.
Commissioner Adams?
No.
Commissioner Norpson?
No.
Commissioner McFadden?
No.
And Chair Helfrich?
No.
Motion does not pass.
In our pack, we have a motion.
Chair, I'd actually like to suggest that we modify the language because I would like to remove the language. Asking for the applicants to take responsibility for any potential damage done to the water line. And I'm not quite sure how that would be phrased. I think our agenda only has it to take it as is. So we'll probably have to have a motion and then I would presume some more deliberation on that piece in particular.
So if I may, the easiest way to resolve this is just ask to remove the condition and the finding goes with it. So you can ask to remove that condition of the deed declaration and you can leave it to staff to remove that deed decla, or remove that condition. Remove the language that creates that condition and then Chair Helfrich looks at the final order before he signed it to make sure that that's done. If that's the only change you want to make, then that's, I would make a motion to approve the application. As presented, removing that deed declaration condition and the findings associated with it.
Just a point of order, the hearing is still open. And the applicant can still have. Then we can go on to the next step.
Yeah.
Okay.
You're welcome.
Yeah, that too. But also if I can, just, Jeff just reminded me to, we did have the one condition about the biologic assessment too that needs to be done. So we would want to see that changed to the final order too, because that's not a should, that's a have to.
That's a female, female requirement.
Correct.
So can you actually put down some language that articulate the motion for us and in a moment, once they close the hearing?
Yes.
Thank you.
I still have questions for, this is definitely they're going to rebut. Basically, is the applicant going to have a rebuttal time?
Is rebuttal actually when you have somebody who opposes and then, and then they get a chance to rebut, but we only had comments and support?
Well, I think, I think there's enough grounds here that a rebuttal would be appropriate myself. Let's keep in mind, we got 20 minutes. I don't want to extend this meeting. We don't have to. But I believe there's been enough discussion that if the applicant wants to respond to a rebuttal or refer to that testament. And I do think that, I think it was, Scott, you had some. So just really quickly, please.
Did you review the project and that's why it took longer? I do appreciate how timely we did the review. But we made modifications to address ODOT's concerns and it's my understanding ODOT approved everything that we.
Okay. Thank you.
You can hear me on, it's not a rebuttal. I just wanted to make sure that you were clear that yes, the new. Condition that was brought forth tonight that we just heard about. condition that was brought forth tonight that we just heard about, we are okay with that. It's just this one. So just to clarify, if you did agree to remove the, the one condition about the um deed restriction, that was our only issue with this application as well.
Alrighty, thank you. So, um, I guess at this time, I will close the public hearing. Commissioners discussion, I think we've already had that. Um, I think we're looking for a motion.
My other question for staff.
Please.
Who pays for the removal of the berm and the work? Is it all grant funding or is it?
There, there's no city expense.
But I, I understand.
I, I don't know their funding source, but.
Okay, got it. A little bit off topic, but how do they measure results? Okay.
Well, they said that I, two years of monitoring, is that what I heard? Three years of monitoring, so.
And that includes monitoring of the, um, uh, the whole right here, the area where the foot print berm is removed as well as monitoring with from the law life of, uh, the, um, access point of, we kind of forget about that, Blue Heron Creek will be reconnected.
Mr. Chair, point of order, the, the, the hearing's closed.
I'm sorry.
The hearing is closed.
Wait, wait. He directed it toward them.
It's in here.
Exactly.
It's all about definitely fishing.
So that answers your question.
Was pointing to use of temperature mon, so that is in line with what you would expect of a standard rest provision project.
All right, thank you.
And that's a measurement.
Thank you.
That you're looking for, so, okay.
Yeah.
Okay. So I think we're listening.
So I would like to make a motion then that we approve. Uh, I actually need the language because it's, it's kind of technical.
I, yeah, I mean, I could probably say it and you could probably just say yes.
I make a motion too.
Yes, to approve the proposed final order as presented, removing the de-declaration condition and the findings associated with it, and then adding in the requirement for the biologic assessment.
Yes.
Perfect. We have a motion in a second. Roll call, please.
Commissioner McFadden?
Yes.
Commissioner Monso? Commissioner Norpson?
Yes.
Commissioner Adams?
Yes.
And Commissioner Lutz?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Yes.
Sorry, yes.
So, Mr. Chair, if I may just explain the process going forward.
Please.
So a notice of decision is mailed out, a notice of decision will also be mailed out to the mobile home park um, and every resident within the mobile home park identifying what has been approved tonight. They have fourteen days, fourteen days to appeal the application. Should they, should we receive an appeal or in a notice of intent to appeal, the application would be forwarded, your, your decision would be forwarded to the city council to me, uh, to hear the appeal. So the decision will not be final until fourteen days from probably tomorrow, if you come in and sign the final order.
Thank you.
So officially the motion passes?
Yeah, officially, and I'll be in tomorrow or the afternoon. Um, okay, so, um, any, uh, new business?
Uh, no, no new business, no.
No new business? Thank you, thank you, folks.
Uh, there, are you asking for new business or planning, the planning director?
Uh, well, I guess is that the only, yeah, I'm asking new business, we have any new business or is that just what, what we're talking about?
No, we, we already went past new business again.
So the commissioner, comments from commissioners? Thank you all.
I, I would like to thank everybody who's still left in the room and everyone who worked on this process. When I, I viewed the paperwork and the report, it was phenomenal. We received a hundred and twenty-five pages. I was phenomenally impressed with the amount of thoroughness, the science, the agency, uh, inter-agency work that was done, the amount of time, the volunteer work, the nonprofit work on it, the grant writing. It, it's an extreme amount of time that was put into that, and I know it started also with, uh, some citizen involvement, so. So thank you so much and thank you to the staff because I also know you guys.
Yeah, and, and while there's an audience, I do want to thank Jeff for having at least four, if not five, pre-application meetings prior to the application being submitted to make sure that we did get as much information as we could get on this application to make sure we got it as right as we could the first time. So w- we had a number of them and, and he did a good job.
And I, I know it's not helping, I'm sorry, I got to draw the, I like the Paul face it.
Yes.
We've always, uh, all along, this is the thing, six community. We love, we're, we're in that, that part of our environment, but how that to develop our community, we can, we can start. It has to be something that we work on together, so, um, that is appreciated, love. This is part of that.
Thank you. Yes. So, uh, starting, starting over here, uh, Mr. Lutz, comments, commissioner comments.
Good. No comments.
Zero, nada, huh? Nope. I think maybe you might have some.
I think I've said a lot.
I think we're all a little bit, that was my brain is it. But anyway, thank you all. Um, it's a great project. I mean, I just, I, I never knew that was there, never knew it existed. And what a, what a deal, what a, what a, what a wonderful project. That's my, that's my comment. Um, director, community director, we guess we don't have that.
Uh, well, I do have some things that the commission would like to be updated. Um, so we finally heard back from CPa. He was on vacation somewhere out of the United States for a very bit long period of time and they seem to have found a little bit of maybe resources for us. So we're making some traction, um, as long as they keep communicating with us. Um, so we're, we're working through that. Um, the city council did park, uh, park the past master plan, I can't hear any talk anymore, passed the park master plan, um, at last council meeting. Um, so I will be working on a comprehensive plan amendment for the park element, um, which is almost done. Um, I decided to wait to bring it to you until they approved that to make sure I didn't make, to make any changes. Um, and so we'll be working through a comprehensive plan amendment for a new park element that's coming forward. Um, there's going to be a couple of more zone changes, uh, zoning code changes. Um, I've got to get the FEMA stuff in there for one. Um, and, um, I'm, I'm hoping it's the summer, probably after the summer. I don't want to, uh, if we don't have public hearings and things like that, we're just going to just probably chill and then dive into everything, um, probably in the fall. Um, we will, we will come back to our code amendments that we were working on after Jeff and I untangle the mess that was created from the, all the other amendments that we did. We've got to figure out what we were proposing to you that we no longer need to propose because they've been adopted. So now we got to start over, but we're going to bring that back to you so we can finish those things. So, um, aside from that, um, it sounds like I, I heard, uh, watch duty's, uh, cell phone or, you know, message ring. Uh, the wildfire camera has been operational for over a month now. Um, it has spotted and detected fires that, um, I, I think it probably was the first one to spot the Neal fire, Neal Creek fire. Um, and so it's doing its job, it's available, the notifications are great. So if you haven't already signed up for it, sign up for watch duty. Um, and it gives you the level evacuations, you can turn on or off notifications, um, and you can do up to four counties. So.
Do you foresee a meeting next, next month?
Next month, uh, yes, August, oh, no, I guess, well, we're going to meet August eleventh anyway.
Okay.
Um, but we will not, yeah, we will not meet on the last week of this month. And you won't receive a notification. Um, it's not our, it's not our planned council, our planning commission meeting. So we're not going to send out a cancellation notice on the second, uh, the second meeting of the month. Um, we'll only would send out a cancellation notice if we canceled the, the one that we're obligated to have. So don't expect to receive that, but if we have to hold one for some reason, we will notify you. But we don't have anything timely right now.
So with that, uh, we, here.